Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I'm going to call the Ojai City Council and the Ojai Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency to order our meeting for, a regular meeting for October 8th, 2013. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Councilmember Clapp?
Here.
Mayor Protemp Strobel?
Present.
Mayor Blatts?
Here.
And Councilmember Smith is absent this evening.
Could I call upon Councilwoman Clapp to lead us in the pledge, please?
Follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I said, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Your input to our meeting is very important. We have a presentation to make this evening. Is Jean Dickinson here? Hi, Jean. The city has a proclamation that I'd like to read to you. And the proclamation is as follows. Whereas serious mental illness such as major depression, bipolar disorder, schizophrenia, obsessive-compulsive disorder, severe anxiety disorders, borderline personality disorder, and post-traumatic stress disorders affect one out of every four people annually, and whereas serious mental illness is a highly treatable, is highly treatable, mental illness of the brain posing the same concern as cancer, heart disease, diabetes, and other illnesses. And whereas scientific research is producing tremendous breakthroughs in the understanding of mental illness resulting in more effective treatments to allow people to reclaim full and productive lives, and whereas misunderstandings exist about mental illness and social culture often wrongly imposes a stigma on mental illness, and whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping to improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness, now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Paul Blatts, the mayor of the city of Ojai, and on behalf of the members of the Ojai City Council, recognize October 6th through October 12th, 2013, as Mental Illness Awareness Week. And we call upon all Ventura County residents, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increase and to promote the public awareness, understanding, treatment, and recovery of mental illness. And it's signed by me, the mayor of Ojai, this eighth day of October, 2013, and it's attested by Rhonda Bissour, our city clerk. I'd like to give this to you, please. If you'd come forward. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'm James Graham. I'm Jean Dickinson's husband.
Welcome.
And we live at 811 Tico Road in Miramonte. And we're members of NAMI, Ventura County. It's the National Alliance on Mental Illness. And we'd like to thank you for this proclamation, which I'm pleased to accept. She's pleased to accept. In 1990, Congress proclaimed the first week of October to be designated as Mental Illness Awareness Week in recognition of NAMI's efforts to raise mental illness awareness. Every year, one in four adults are affected with depression, bipolar disorder, schizophrenia, PTSD, borderline personality disorder, and other mental illnesses. And it affects all of our families and our communities, and it can strike any one of us at any time. Two million Americans live with schizophrenia, twice the number of those with HIV/AIDS. And one in five veterans of Iraq and Afghanistan, almost 300,000 troops, will experience major depression or post-traumatic stress disorder after returning home. Unfortunately, two-thirds of people who live with mental illness do not receive treatment. Treatment works, but only if a person can get it. Most mental illness begins by age 24, and unfortunately, there are long delays, sometimes decades, between the first appearance of symptoms and when a person gets help. Jean and I have a son who suffers from major depression and other complications. And due to our lack of understanding of its complexity and the deficit of adequate resources available to families and those afflicted, our son grew up, and we also, without sufficient information and resources for getting proper diagnosis and access to proper treatment for his condition. This left him with the all-too-common option in these days to rely on self-medication for relief from his great discomfort and pain. And unfortunately, this led him down a spiral path, fighting his mental illness and the resulting problems with addiction. But thanks to NAMI's 12-week family-to-family program, which we participated in, we've come to a much better understanding of our son's disease and have learned much more effective ways to support him and ourselves during his struggles with recovery and all of our healing. Our son is now working and living on his own and doing quite well. The U.S. Surgeon General has reported that stigma is a major barrier to people seeking help when they need it. And that's why Mental Illness Awareness Week is observed. The more people know, the better they can help themselves and their loved ones. NAMI Ventura County stands ready to offer support, education, and advocacy to families affected by mental illness. There's no charge for their services. We appreciate this opportunity to speak and help make our community aware of issues relating to mental illness and up-to-date information on current resources that are available.
Thank you very much. Did you want to say anything, too?
Just wanted to thank you for listening very quietly and attentively.
Wow. Thank you very much for being here. It says we now have a presentation for the Ojai Day poster.
And Amber Young?
Amber here?
Yes.
All right. Amber, this is exciting.
I'm going to hope it doesn't fall down.
Wonderful.
Oh, it matches your dress. Did you do that on purpose?
Thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Blatts and councilmembers. Thank you so much for having me this evening to present the 2013 Ojai Day poster. This year, we were very fortunate in receiving pieces from seven different, very accomplished artists. And after a very long discussion and not very many fists thrown, we came to this decision. This year, we asked artists to submit pieces that depicted the Ojai spirit, hoping that we would cast a wide net and be able to come up with some pieces that were different than what we've had in the past and really captured Ojai. And so this piece is by Susan Guy, our Ojai Day poster artist. And it's titled "Redwood Ranch Topas." She works in the plain area to allow the natural beauty of the area to really seep into her pieces, and I think everyone would probably agree with me that it works out quite well. And so here's your piece.
Thank you very much, Amber. And thank you. That's a beautiful piece. Thank you. And you might want to turn it around and exhibit it to the audience so that they can see it a little more.
One other one?
Yeah.
$50.
These posters are available at the Recreation Department office and will be available to purchase during Ojai Day. You can also visit Susan's booth at Ojai Day. She'll be located on Ojai Avenue, right next to the information booth, to have them signed and to purchase there as well.
Great.
Additionally, she is a studio artist and is on the Studio Artist tour next, this coming weekend, in case you would like to see more of her pieces.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda are the commission reports. Are there any commission members here that want to report to the council tonight?
Was it the field board count?
Sure. Absolutely.
I just want to make a couple comments. One is, we're having another meeting tomorrow night, and two things I wanted to bring to the council's attention. One, we spoke before the Planning Commission, and they're also very interested in doing what we can as volunteers to help, their words, not mine, kickstart the languishing second edition program and, you know, help get that vetted and running. Number two, we're going to be very concerned tomorrow night on how we inform the public about what their appeal rights are, what the procedures should be, so that, you know, everyone who might want to use that service, you know, they know they have the right and the procedure for doing that. Second of all, we're really interested in really digging into some research on an ad hoc basis about the sanitary district, which of course is outside the jurisdiction, but probably financially may be one of the single major impediments to the successful implementation of the second unit program. I was just informed that we don't have a city council designate liaison with the sanitary district.
I'm not sure, do we?
Or do we?
No, VRSD.
No, I thought Samara was.
Samara is?
No, no.
I would suggest we have one.
Let me ask a question before you go on. I thought we had agreed that the representative for the sanitation district would also serve as the liaison to the local sanitary.
Well, that's Carol Smith. VRSD's Carol.
Okay. Well, I didn't know. I have been referred to Councilwoman Clapp, and I wanted to be clear as to who the ad hoc committee might want to be speaking with on the council.
It is Councilwoman Smith.
Okay. That's why I appreciate knowing that. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you. And I attended the first meeting of the board, and I was extremely excited. I think we've got an outstanding board membership. And Bill was elected. Bill Wirick was elected the chairman of the body. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else from the commissions wishing to speak? No? Any of the council have any questions of Bill? All right. We're going to move on to public communications. Public communications is a time set aside at the beginning of our agenda to take comments from the public on items that are specifically not on our agenda. And the council cannot take any action with regard to anything brought up at the public communications. We can briefly discuss it, and if we want to delve into it any further, we have to put it on a future agenda. And I do have some speakers' cards. So let's start off with Patricia Lunetta. Hi, Patricia.
Thank you. I'm here to talk about the new owners of the Ojai Rancho Motel and how it's affecting my neighborhood. And I've prepared, I hope, a succinct story.
Okay.
I live at 602 Crestview Drive, which is behind Rancho Motel kind of diagonally and up, so I'm high on the hill. Several Thursday nights ago, I went down to the church, as I've been doing, St. Andrews Church on Bristol and Ojai Avenue, to have our worship service of silent prayer and evening prayer. And about 10 minutes into the 20, first 20-minute sit, a boom-boom-boom started, which was the loud music coming from the motel. It continued the entire time until 8:30, when we left. I went home and opened up my house to cool off the hot house, and I could hear it from my house, so I closed my house up. So I'm here both as a church member and as a resident. And the things I'd like to mention, besides my own personal living in the area, is Thursday nights, every Thursday night, we have a meditation and a prayer at church. Tuesday nights, we have choir practice. Monday nights, usually adult ed. The other nights, most other nights, AA groups meet there in Al-Anon. In November, coming up, we have someone's memorial life celebration on a Saturday night. We have High Holy Days before Easter, where there are evening services Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve, silent meditation. And so for these reasons, both as a resident and as a church member, I'd like to say that the way the motel has morphed into a nightclub or a night spot with alcohol and very loud music, and you can look at their website to see all the upcoming musical events, I would like to ask that this gets stopped and that it revert back to the motel that it was meant to be. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
And thank you for all your work.
Mayor, could I just give you a little report on that? We did receive the complaints that were mentioned, and we determined that they are not permitted to have outdoor entertainment at that facility as things stand right now. They've been informed of that. They have also said they understood it and agreed to it. The sheriff's department's been part of that process. And they do have the right to apply for a conditional use permit, and if they did, there'd be a notice public hearing before the Planning Commission. So at this point in time, no outdoor events of that nature are permitted.
Thank you.
All right. Did I answer your question?
I think so.
Yes. Councilwoman Clapp?
I'd like to ask a real quick question. Was there any music this weekend?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
But actually, Jeff, some other people.
Would you come to the podium, please?
Yeah. Some other people live closer.
I live on Country. Well, come up to the, come up and tell me who you are and, that's fine.
My name is Barbara Wells, and I live on Country Club Drive. I'm the first house there, and I have a direct line. I mean, I've heard everything that's been going on for a very long time, as far as I'm concerned. And sometimes up until, you know, 1 o'clock, I've had to call the police, and I had to drive there because I wanted to make sure it was coming, you know, the music was coming from there.
So there was music this weekend as well?
Yes. And then they were, it was quite, it was quiet. You know, it wasn't as loud as they had been playing.
But they still had it.
But they are advertising all over, and there's a club, I was told, in Palm Springs that does this sort of thing. And, but they're on a very large piece of property. And so, you know, it's, in my mind, if this is true, that they have to get a conditional use permit, then we'll have to follow it by, see what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. It looks as though we have things under control, but if it continues, please notify us, okay?
But do I call the police or just come to the city?
Please, if there's outdoor entertainment going on, call the police.
Father Jeff Willem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm the rector at St. Andrews Episcopal Church and also a neighbor of Patty's and a neighbor of the church. But speaking to the point, I have talked to the police several times, and they have, I know, been out there. And if you want to check how many concerts they have, I think you'd check the police records, and you'll find out. But as to them stopping, they advertised a concert last week in the paper on October 2nd, said this weekend, "Seestars," an Ojai-based duo, will release, will celebrate the release of its first full-length album with a performance Thursday at 7:00 PM at the Rancho Inn. And that was after supposedly they were stopping. And I have, my neighbor Mark also has been in correspondence with them, and they, you know, they say they're stopping, they're turning the music down, is what they're doing. And it seems to me they've, if you look on their website, which is really the great reveal, they advertise the Rancho Electro. And they, I mean, they've advertised this as a club. It's, I can't remember what the name of it is exactly. It tells about, there are four, were four concerts in September, and, you know, it's not a motel anymore. So that is my protest. And the other thing is, I don't, I don't know what the zoning laws are, but they're right across the street from the junior high school. And I have seen, I remember Woodstock, and I have seen kids in the parking lot of the Seventh-day Adventist Church drinking and partying and carrying on overflow from this thing. So it's really kind of spreading into the neighborhood, and that's not a good thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Father Jeff. I take it we'll follow up and make sure that whatever they're doing, we can control.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. Steve Wood?
I guess that's me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Steve Wheat. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I, there's one person that I was expecting to see tonight, and I've never actually met her. Do you have a card for Gina?
I have.
You want? Oh, good. Hi.
Hi.
Well, I'm not sure how many cards you have, but maybe this will be a good introduction. I'm so glad you could make it. So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I spoke to you about two months ago regarding rental property, and I'm here mostly because it just keeps showing up in the people that I know and have had an opportunity to meet. Gina will speak to her own case, but she's a neighbor just two houses down. She has kids in elementary school and not in school yet, and she thankfully has found another place to live. She's been wrangling with her landlord for, going on four months now, as I understand it, because they have mold in their rental property. The foundation is unsettled. And again, she's spent this long in this facility because she's trying to find other housing. Housing is tight in Ojai, and it gives a license for people who have rental property to, you know, kind of slide a little bit on the regulations. And again, the challenge with this is, it's not that these people don't have recourse. Indeed, they do. But the challenge is that rental people, for the most part, don't have the time and/or the resources to advocate for themselves, and they do as a last resort. So the proposal that I run up the flagpole a couple of months ago is focused on preventative measures. And I'm not sure if this has been considered outside of, you know, a council meeting, or if there's been any action or consideration for this. But I came because I wanted to voice that again. It's not my issue. It's a public safety concern issue. So I'll yield to you, and if you have any encouragement, I would be totally open to that.
Thank you. Did you want to have a, did you have a comment, too? Okay, come forward, please. And if you could identify yourself. Thank you.
Certainly. Likewise. Hi. Hi, I'm Gina Dillon, Genevieve Dillon. And I was introduced to Steve on social networking today about wanting to bring forth some sort of way of protecting people in the community against slum lords. And I've actually been working with your son, Ryan. I don't know if I'm supposed to say that, but he's a great guy, and I have a really strong case and a really bad situation, similar to the one that he's talking about with the woman with kids. I'm a single mom. I've been living in a house I loved, wanted to stay there for four years, seemed to have a great relationship with a landlord, signed a lease with a unit out back. I acted as sub-landlord and signed this lease agreeing to comply with all zoning ordinances and did this in good faith, thinking, hey, everything's cool, this is a great house, it's got a studio out back, rent it to a friend, we have dog yard, everything's great, we love our house. And then, fast forward, you know, half a year, come to find out, I mean, we had a lot of problems with heating. We haven't had heat since last January. My electric bills have been $250 a month because we've been running space heaters in a house built in 1941 with no insulation. My ceiling caved into my bedroom in June. I lived in my living room for six weeks. I had to go through six weeks of water remediation. I didn't get a full rental abatement for that, so there's been other problems. But then when I finally had enough, and I said, okay, fine, I don't care if it's the middle of summer, fix my heater, because I'm still paying off my electric bills from last year, you know, just do it. They completely ignored me, went out and hired an attorney, and gave me basically a three-day payer quit, and now I'm facing eviction. I've paid my rent in full. My tenant out back basically had to leave because the county came in and found that the unit was illegal. So I had been sub-landlording, teneting, whatever you call it, acting as a landlord, subletting this unit that I thought in good faith was a legal unit. And, you know, I mean, I'm looking at a lease, I'm like, oh, must comply with all zoning ordinance. I'm certainly not going to do what that hotel's doing and throw parties and have underage drinking. I'm certainly not going to tear down walls and do anything. I'm just going to be a good tenant and pay my rent in full. That's what I did every month. But when the county came in and said, hey, this unit's illegal, no one can live here at zero occupancy, they pulled out the stove, they pulled out the shower, my roommate split. Guess who's stuck with the bill? I am on the full lease for $23.50, and I have to pay it in order to live there. But because of retaliation and all this stuff that's going on, I'm now being forced to move. Ojai's a tight market. There's nothing out there. I have to save first, last, and deposit, it's like five grand every time you want to move into a place. And then you go to look at a place, and you start really getting nervous about the way this other old house is set up. Oh, no, that can't be a bedroom, it can only be an office because it's connected to a garage. Oh, no, that house out there is only a shop, you can't really sleep in it. And so we're just like, God, you know, how are we going to keep our kids in school here in Ojai? How are we going to make a living here in Ojai? We work three jobs just to pay these huge rents as it is, and then we have lawyers and landlords that are just like harassing and breathing down our necks, and it's a nightmare. So when I saw Steve's post today, I was like, right on. And he said, come down, and I said, okay. So that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you, Ms. Dillon.
And I love your son, he's awesome.
Thank you. Just, just for the record, apparently Ms. Dillon is a client of Ryan's and not associated, I have no association with her whatsoever. I'm not sure, is there any building and safety violation here, or is there any?
First of all, I would, I would wonder if the county was going out and making zoning determinations, if this is not a property that's in the county unincorporated area, not the city area. However, if there is a complaint about...
What is your address?
It's 1180 Forest Avenue, and it is in Ojai. And the county has been out a couple of times, and, you know, because they didn't pull permits to do a lot of different things.
I don't know where that is.
It's in Miramonte.
Oh, okay. That's not, that's not Ojai.
Oh.
That's why, that's why we were taken back a little bit by surprise.
Well, I have an Ojai address.
Right. It's an Ojai address, but Ojai doesn't start till you get to almost Villanova Road.
Oh, sorry. Didn't mean to waste your time.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad I shared the story, because, I mean, I'm still Ojai, and I'm still looking on Ojai Craigslist.
We only have jurisdiction over things that happen within our city limits.
Well...
Yes, Councilwoman Clapp?
One, real quickly, because I talked to Mr. Clark today about this very issue, because I think it is an important one, because slum lords are really a drag. And I asked him if there was any, any place that a renter could contact, and I was wondering if you'd contacted the Housing Rights Center.
No. No. In Ventura or Ojai?
Well, it provides free counseling and landlord-tenant rights and responsibilities.
I actually did call the one in Ojai, and they never called me back.
Let me, I can give you the number.
Okay.
Could you write this down for Rhonda? It's 800-477-5977. It's called the Housing Rights Center. You might want to call them.
Right. I will. Thanks.
Thank you again. I don't have any other speakers' cards. Is there anyone else? Mr. Clay? Welcome.
I put one in.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I had a question for Mr. Wheat, if we could just go back real quick.
Yes.
And I know this is an agendalized item, so I know we can't really speak about it. But I don't have a direct, direct question to him, but I just have a direct, I don't know if we need to bring this, if other council members think it's important and bring it back to the, to the future item, just to think about, is there any per, things that the city could do to prevent slum lords from taking advantage of tenants, or if we just, if we could handle that? I, it's just a question, because it is a concern. I do rent, but I hear horror stories, and luckily, I have a good landlord, but I hear horror stories that people go through in the city. So I'm just interested if we could talk about it a little bit more, have a little bit more conversation.
Okay. Perhaps Mr. Fletcher could provide us with a, with a, I don't want you to go to any great length, but how, how the, the building code or the health and safety issues of the city interact with slum lords? Because I don't believe we have an ordinance specifically directed at slum lords. We may, but I don't think so.
I don't think we do. What, I mean, obviously, those properties are subject to the, to the health codes and the building codes. That is one of the issues that's often, is the best tools used is some of the, some of the newer housing codes, in terms of housing safety codes. One of the things you deal with, one of the things that local governments do when they deal, we don't have direct jurisdiction over landlord-tenant relationships, but some communities have a annual rental property inspection program. And in fact, my former client, City of Santa Ana, we, one of the first communities in the, in the state to do it. And so it basically requires anybody who has a business, because if anybody rents property, it has to have a business license in the property rental business. And anybody with one of those licenses was required to register with the city. And anybody with one of those licenses was required to register with the city. And, and there'd be biannual, semiannual, annual property maintenance inspections for public health and safety issues with housing. And then a self-inspection program to encourage people to maintain their properties and get it maintained, and they get a gold seal, and they don't have to go through annual inspections. So that's, those programs do exist. Usually there is a fee that's imposed on all the, a surcharge on, on, on business taxes to fund those programs. Fairly comprehensive. I'm not sure, don't know if, if, if there's a, enough volume in, in Ojai to make that work. I can get you some, I could give the council a memo with some information about some of those programs. That's probably the best way to deal with it.
If you would, that'd be very beneficial.
Happy to.
Yes. Mayor Protim Strobel.
I have a question for Mr. Fletcher. Is this anything that the city could address? And just as a reminder, the city of Ojai is four and a half square miles. That's all. The postal address extends beyond that, but you may or may not be within the city. But if, if there is a, a situation within the city of Ojai, if a tenant contacted community development with a, an issue or a problem, do we have any authority to, to check that problem, to, to verify there's no health and safety?
We clearly have the authority. I mean, just like any other code, code enforcement complaint, we can, we can investigate on whether there's a, a housing code violation. Can do that. That's always on a, that's a case-by-case basis. And again, one of the issues you get is the gentleman spoke, one of the problems is, is if you're a tenant of property and, and the landlord gets a, a code enforcement notice from the city, is there, you know, a risk of retaliation? That's the big fear that, that's one of the, why, why what a lot of cities have done is, is have these institute rental, rental property inspection programs. So there's a proactive program in place. It's not reacting to initial complaints, but instead establishing a protocols for some annual inspection of, of rental properties. Many of those, as many of those are limited to multifamily units, not single-family rentals. But you have that discretion to change that.
I have one final comment. And that, and it's a problem with, with so many things. But if you're having difficulty as a tenant, you are really going to have to have the courage to stand up and say, this, this, and this is occurring, and I haven't been able to have this addressed. You're really going to have to stand up and say, this is a problem. We can't just anonymously inject ourselves into situations where there's a problem between landlord-tenant.
Yeah. That's very true.
As Councilmember Clapp mentioned, there are a lot of nonprofit organizations can help tenants. I assume Ventura County Bar probably has a pretty, pretty solid landlord-tenant advisory function. There's Legal Aid Society. There are resources, low-cost and free resources to tenants. I don't know if Ventura County has a tenants' rights program of any sort. A lot of, a lot of communities have some sort of informational program on, on tenant rights, too. So there are, there are resources, not expensive resources, out there.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more comment, and that is, I would like to see us include on our website a, some contact information between landlord-tenant disputes. Where can they reach out for some assistance? I'm, I don't believe we have a high enough volume of these problems for the city to enact ordinances in this type of thing.
All right.
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
All right. And you'll provide some sort of a memo on the other programs?
Hello.
All right.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would just introduce Mr. Fletcher. Ask Mr. Fletcher, I don't know his role in the council or his...
Mr. Fletcher is the city attorney. Mark Tullman.
Hi there. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Basically, I just came here for two reasons tonight. I'm a resident of Crestview, at 320 Crestview, and you've obviously heard the complaints about the noise and whatnot. So my main reason is just to show another face and objection to the noise that's going on over there. I forwarded things to Steve Arthur and Betsy Clapp, recordings off our iPhones, just the noise at 8:30 on a school night that my children had to endure before class the next day. And my other concern is I've heard they're going to apply for a permit to play music, and I would just like the council to give us the opportunity as a residence in a neighborhood to be included. We want to be included in that process and, you know, to make the best judgment for our neighborhood and our children and anyone else that's in, you know, the residence that have to endure this noise. So that's all I'm here to say tonight.
Yes, Councilwoman Clapp.
I have a real quick question, Mr. Fletcher. With a CUP of this kind, would there be a notice to the, to the people within 500 feet of, of this?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, I mean, and you may want to make a note that we may want to have the organization, have maybe some neighbors in, send a letter to the clerk's office and the planning department letting, asking for notice in the event they're outside the, the notice area. It's not, it's, it's adjacent, right? They're not on the same street. It backs up to each other. But you can, you can serve a notice on the city or the planning department and the clerk's office, request for notice of future hearings. That might be a good thing to do.
And it, it would require a public hearing in order for the planning commission to issue a conditional use permit.
Okay.
And at that public hearing, people of the, people within the public should come forward and voice their opinion. Mayor Protim Strobel?
I, I just wanted to clarify that a hearing on a CUP is something that would come before the planning commission, not the city council.
Okay.
Unless it's appealed, then it would come before us.
So should I go to the city council and, and meet with them and just show my objection?
No, what you want to do is you want to give notice to our community development department that you want to have notice of any hearing with regard to the CUP for there.
Perfect.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Now we can get to you, Mr. Clay, and Bill, you'll be next. I kind of shuffled some green cards around.
No problem. Leonard Clay, 412 North Fulton Street. I was moved to comment by your, the proclamation on mental health awareness. As a criminal defense attorney, I see far too often that our jails and prisons have become substitutes for mental hospitals. The cost of, of criminalizing mentally ill people is, I don't know, three, four, five, six times more than it would to provide real treatment. And until we as a society come up with a better way of treating mental illness than, than criminalizing it, this problem is going to exist, and it's, it's just heart-wrenching to see this over and over and over again. So thank you for making the proclamation. And thank you to the people who came in and have been doing the work.
It really is heart-wrenching, and it's not only heart-wrenching from the standpoint that prisons are being used to house people that have mental disorders, but most or great many of our homeless have mental disorders, and we're not providing them with any kind of treatment at all either. Bill Wirick.
Mayor Blatz, Mayor Protim Strobel, and other council people, I have a handout for you because time is short. When I started, and I'm speaking as a citizen only right now, okay? When I looked into the, I was starting to look into the second unit program, I noticed that there was a new reporting requirement in the second unit program effective July 4th, July 1st, 2014, in the resolution adopted April 9th of 2013. Digging into this a little bit, I was surprised to find that on the city's website, MUNICODE posting, ordinance 826 is effective June 28th of 2013. Section 13 of that ordinance includes this reporting requirement as already in effect. The issue here is that the agendas for the notice on 826 for on April 9th introduction and final passage on May 28th do not anywhere reference adding a new Chapter 16 to Title 10. The motions for introduction and passage for ordinance 826 also only mention amending Chapter 2 to Title 10, and therefore do not mention, again, adding this Chapter 16 reporting requirement, which is of concern to the real estate industry and sellers. Reading from the report required, no owner shall permit an escrow to close until receipt for such waiver or waiver substantially in the form called for in this section is filled with the escrow holder and the director. This is already in effect. I'm sure there's been closings that have violated this unless the MUNICODE posting on the website is in fact incorrect. The purpose of, of talking about this, and again, I'm running out of time, is that the Brown Act makes very clear that the purpose of a brief general description on an agenda item is to inform interested members of the public about the subject matter under consideration so they can determine whether to monitor or participate in the meeting of the body. The way this was handled, I don't think the real estate brokers knew about it. And for that reason, I think it's something that, that should be looked at. The California State Code that cites this is permissive, not mandating. It says that by ordinance may provide. My reading is that it's not, this reporting requirement is not required. It refers to as being part of the housing element. I can't find it in the 200 pages of the housing element that are posted on the website. I don't have access to, again, everything that you have access to. And so I, on my second page here, as I run out of time, just want to state, and I'll read for the record, given the lack of clear notice to those most affected by the passage of Part 13, the error of omission, the ordinance title and motions to adopt, lack of communication to those most affected after passage, contradictions of disclosure in city documentation, the lack of a state mandate for its adoption, and the lack of a clear relationship to the goals of the housing element, it seems that the council might want to consider an immediate suspension of this Chapter 13 or Part 13 until a clear, a properly clear and transparent procedure for its consideration can be followed. And I want to also point out in my last 12 seconds that there is a procedure in the Brown Act for immediate action on, on things by two-thirds vote if it's adversely affecting the real estate community that apparently didn't know about this requirement until just recently. Thank you.
Yes.
I wanted to comment that Mr. Wirick gave me a packet on this information. I read it, and I gave it to our city manager. So perhaps our city manager can respond to this, is where we are now.
Yeah, absolutely.
If I could just interrupt for a minute. Mr. Wirick brought this to my attention, and I just recently had my municipal code updated. And in my Title 10, there is no Chapter 16, even though it was just updated. So I'm not sure whether there, and as I, as I said to Mr. Wirick, I show 14 and 15 having been repealed and no, no Chapter 16 at all in my municipal code.
So just to, to sort of respond to this, first of all, the program does not go into effect until the, what we originally called the amnesty program, but the second unit program is concluded, which would be July 1st of 2014, right now as the, as the ordinance stands. It is in fact a provision of the fourth cycle housing element and the proposed fifth cycle housing element that we submitted to HCD. So in order to change the underlying requirement, you'd have to amend the housing element. The best time to do that is when we have our hearing on the housing element, which would be on December 12th. So it's, it's part of that housing element. And at that time, we can give you some of the background and reasoning behind it. But we did in fact provide the Building Appeals Board with a copy of the section of the housing element that has the current requirement in it, as well as that which is in the fifth round. And the other, the other question that came up, and I did discuss this with the city attorney, is, is the ordinance that adopted it legal because it didn't have a complete title? And his opinion is that it is legal. So I think where we are is that really it's a housing element issue, and the time to address it is when the housing element comes up on December 12th.
Okay.
May I make one comment on that? I'm reading from the city's printout on the wet MUNICODE ordinance. Ordinance number 826, Part 13, effective June 28th, 2013. I don't know how a resolution of council can take down a ratified ordinance. I, I just don't understand that. And I'm concerned about the legal liability of the real estate brokerage industry. And that's really my main motivation. Am I really here to speak about the pros or cons of the requirement itself?
Thank you.
I would just like to refer to the updates. They're done quarterly. So as I send them in, they, the code company sends them back quarterly. So I just gotten the updates from the last ones I sent in, and that's why we admit those weren't in your book yet.
Okay.
So.
All right. Well, I'm concerned with the, with the effective date of that ordinance, too. Should we be?
Well, the, the ordinance, that entire implementation ordinance went into effect. I mean, the council, we can have a policy of not enforcing it. There's nothing wrong with that. Although I think I would agree that it should be well, it should be well disclosed, whether it's going to be, you know, not enforced for the first, during the, the moratorium period.
And actually, I think that's the case because the guidelines you adopted for the second unit program do say that it will go into effect in June of 2014. So, and, and we're, maybe July 1st, yeah. So it's not in effect. But Mr. Fletcher and I can take a look at it, and if we think there, there's a need for some city council action, we can come back to you, I guess.
Yeah, and I just heard tonight this argument about the, the Brown Act question. I'm not, that's not been brought up before. I'll take a look at that also, I mean, to see if that's any, any reason to, I mean, again, the, again, we were implementing that entire group of ordinances related to the implementing, implementing the housing element. This is one section within that. Generally, the, the brief description is just that. It doesn't have to itemize each individual issue. And as, as I did advise the manager, the title on an ordinance is not, is not part of the ordinance. It's only, it's only descriptive. In fact, the trend has been away from itemizing every single section and subsection. If you've seen some old ordinances, it's like a paragraph because of trying to articulate every single one. So it's more common to say, you know, many of the code regarding various sections. But in the event, I don't believe that's a notice issue. I do want to look at this Brown Act question that's been raised.
All right. Thank you.
Obviously, it's a huge thing. This...
You want to come forward?
Yes. I'm, I'm here because of this, but I'm just getting, my name's Steve Strike. I'm the president of the Ojai Board of Realtors, and I'm here for this reason. But if you read this paragraph, it's basically a, it's a disclosure item. It's an item that obviously can bring up a lot of lawsuits if a buyer says that you didn't make me aware that I was supposed to be told to go get a report from this city regarding your building and all of its permitted or non-permitted items. It's a, it's a point-of-sale situation, and, and it's no good for sellers or for the, for, for the community at large. So this, we really need to take a serious look at this unless, Robert, I don't know if this is something that has to be included for the housing element, but this, obviously this is a big issue. And if nobody knew about this before this was instituted, it's a really big issue. This is a humongous issue for us.
Right. So, so again, it, it is a provision of the cycle four housing element, which is in effect. And the only way you can change the, the cycle four housing element is to amend it. However, it doesn't actually take effect under our guidelines until July 1st of 2014. So I think everything's okay, but Mr. Fletcher will double-check that and make sure that that's correct.
Especially Mr. Fletcher, because if this is actually an active part, like Mr. Wirick said, because of, I don't know, maybe it's a typo, maybe it's just a conflicting something that went into this system, this is a huge legal matter.
We've got it. We've got the issue.
I, I wanted to make one more comment. And I did read that entire ordinance at the time we approved it. It was a three-two vote. And I reread it. And what I got out of it is that what is required is that an agent representative for a buyer must inform the seller, wait a minute, the buyer has a right to request a report from the seller. It doesn't say that a report must be provided.
Correct.
It says the buyer has the right to request the report. And it asks that either one, a waiver is signed for the report, or a report is provided. So it didn't catch my attention as, as being overly harsh, but I can see that there's been, there's some confusion out there. So I, I'm not sure how best to address and clarify that confusion.
Mr. Mayor, I think we're probably at the end of the great discussion.
Yeah, no more comment.
If I could just clarify for the council. If I could just clarify for the council, with the ordinance, I think the issue raised is that it's a disclosure obligation of the seller. And if sellers have not been satisfying that obligation, if it's required under our code today, and sellers have been closing escrows without that, and then it becomes, and then the buyer says, I failed to disclose, it obviously creates a lot of anxiety on the part of the agents whose job is to deal with disclosures. And we all know that the whole universe of disclosure obligations on the parts of agents today is a big issue. So we understand that.
So I have a question. Excuse me. I have a question. So is this ordinance in effect today?
The ordinance is in effect. The ordinance is passed as in effect. That doesn't mean that this obligation is necessarily in force today because we had the one-year-
But it is. But it is.
I will work with the manager. We will get you a quick answer on what we think is in the laws today.
Yeah, that's my question. How quick will it be?
So we can clearly disclose to the agents and the real estate, the board of Realtors what they have to do.
My question is, how quick is it going to be? Is it going to be two weeks? Is it going to be a month? And what do they do in the meantime?
I'll have an answer. The manager and I will talk before then, business tomorrow.
But what do they do between now and when this gets taken care of? What do the Realtors tell people? Because it is an ordinance. So what do they say now, until this gets solved?
Well, as of tonight, at least from the folks that are here, they could start complying with it.
Well, then maybe-
They can always comply. The only issue is really, and I think we're really done with this short discussion, but they can comply with the ordinance today, and there's no problem. Right now, there's an issue of some escrows closed over the last few months that may be an issue.
But the fact of the matter is that it's an ordinance they need to comply with from now and from this point forward, until we decide whether or not to have that.
That's their decisions to make, but that obviously is something they can do.
And they're saying they didn't know about it.
Right.
So maybe we need to, maybe we need to have some sort of notification.
Mayor Broktem Struble.
I'd like to request that this be placed on the agenda for clarification, for the audience, as well as to make sure that we council members understand it and that we continue to agree with it. Let's look at it again. If we have made an error, then a member in the majority that voted for it can ask that it be revisited unless there's a time limit that has run on that.
If we have two, I think we have two procedural options. One would be an interim ordinance suspending application of the section, or later an ordinance to repeal it. But it's not a reconsideration, so the council could do that.
You can suspend it right now, is what we're saying.
I don't think it's an emergency item that we can take action on tonight.
It is an emergency item.
I'm sorry.
We're mentioned by name in this.
That's correct. I don't believe it's an emergency item.
Owners authorize representatives.
That's enough. I don't believe it's an emergency item. Do you, Mr. Fletcher?
No, sir. I do not believe the grounds exist to take any action tonight.
All right. Then if you could bring it back at the next council meeting, I'd appreciate it. All right. Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, Dale.
I'm sitting on the edge of my seat. You know, when this came before, I was here, because I'm here at almost every meeting. I had no idea that this was happening. And I don't know that any of you really knew. I mean, if you're not a real estate agent, you're not going to be able to see what that means. And I appreciate what you were saying, Carlin, that you read it. And to you, it's, you know, it's so much language on a page. But to a real estate agent, broker, this is enormous. And it really opens the door to inspection on sale. That doesn't do our sellers or our buyers any good. And I think that whatever you have to do to turn that language around, if you've got to amend the housing element or suspend the ordinance, whatever it is, please do that. Thank you.
I have one question for you. Is this the clause that you brought up at the first board meeting? That's what I thought.
Yes, it is. And you know, the other thing I want to add, in response to what you were saying, Mr. Fletcher, is that every real estate agent advises his buyer to go to the city and check permits. We're not trying to hide anything. That doesn't do us any good. I mean, all buyers can do that now. You don't need this kind of language compelling the seller to do this, or the buyer has to sign a waiver saying he didn't want to do it. So if something's discovered down the road, then the onus is on the buyer. Who didn't even know about it? I mean, it's unnecessary. We only need codes here that are mandated by the state. This is not. And I hope you'll consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on items not on the agenda?
Mayor Blatt, just as a comment, I was unaware of this issue, and I just got this packet right now, and I was skimming through it. I do agree as a council member that I would like the staff to look at it. And if we need to, I would be for looking at it. And if you think that we need to make an emergency suspension or something, I'm for it. But it does seem to me, what I hear from the Realtors, that they could be liable for a fine or advising. Yeah. So I would be for looking at it right away, and if we need to come back to do an action, I'd be for it.
And that action can be taken retroactively, I presume, to the effective date?
I don't know.
Okay. Did you find that out?
Yes.
If it can't be done retroactively, then I would suggest maybe it is an emergency item.
It wasn't, and I'm not speaking procedures. I don't think you can, you can't unenact something. If it was the law since this was in effect, it's been the law. We can't change that. And we can't, the term is nunc pro tunc. We can't nunc pro tunc amend the ordinance back several months and make it not have been the law. It will have been the law. If the ordinance was in effect and it wasn't by policy suspended, it was the law.
I'm not an attorney, but again, we have published guidelines that say this doesn't go into effect till June 1st of 2014. And I think we would testify to that in a court of law if someone challenged it.
Okay. Let's move on. Anybody else wishing to address us? All right. Consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar, item A through C, one A through C.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lara?
Yes.
Flapp?
Yes.
Struble?
Yes.
Flatts?
Yes. Item number two on the agenda, and it's a public hearing item, is the polystyrene-based disposable food containers, approval of a negative declaration and introduction of an ordinance prohibiting food vendors from using the same. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The council had expressed an interest in discussing an ordinance of this nature, which is more commonly known as a styrofoam ban. And so we have prepared a proposed ordinance and also a negative deck, but we have not made any effort to notify the public of this potential item coming up, other than the normal publication of the public hearing, pending conversation with the council as to whether you really want to go forward, and whether you really want to go forward in this form or another form. The form that we've provided is very common in the state of California. There are quite a number of cities that have adopted polystyrene bans in this form. And basically, what it addresses is containers that people take food or drinks in away from eating establishments, and requires that they not be made of that material. There are a couple of cities I'm aware of that have gone beyond that and also talked about utensils and other things that are not part of this particular ordinance. And so that's probably a point of discussion for the council as to whether, if you go forward, you would want to do that. Typically, when these types of bans are adopted by a city council, there is a period of time provided so that vendors who have stocks of polystyrene containers have a chance to work through those stocks before they replenish them with an appropriate container. And so we've proposed that this go into effect on July 1st of 2014, just because that's our favorite date. So there's plenty of time to make some decisions about whether you want to go forward, what types of things you want to include in the ordinance, and then for us to get out to the various people who would be affected by it and give them an opportunity to weigh in before you actually introduce the ordinance. So with that, I'd be glad to respond. Any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Clark? No? Well, do you have a question? I'd like to hear what the public has to say. What's your question?
Well, if there, I'd like to hear any comments from the public, and then I have some questions.
All right. We do have two speakers card. Deborah Pendry. I saw you earlier. There you are. Welcome, Deborah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Blatt. Council members, Deborah Pendry, 309 Riverside Road, Oakview, representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. And we wanted to voice our support in looking at the potential or possibility of an ordinance. And I just wanted to share some information. Steve Offerman from Supervisor Bennett's office, he helped author the county ordinance about 10 years ago. And he shared with me that the county banned expanded polystyrene at all county facilities. And from his perspective, there's been no downside. In fact, most people prefer the paper products, and now they're even more readily available, of course, than they were 10 years ago. And the main reason then was to keep polystyrene out of our ocean and waterways, resource conservation, and reducing volume going to the landfills. And I asked him, was there anything else that prompted that? He said, yeah, lots of municipalities were doing it, you know. And so it was kind of a hot topic 10 years ago even. And the county website does explain their ban on this, and it is just in their facilities and events that are held there. And people, they have a written agreement that they have to sign off on, you know, that they will not use this. So that's available for people to look at at the county website on that. Now granted, this is not the same as a ban on retail outlets. It's a totally different animal in some respects. But here's why we would want to consider going this extra step. And we would say this to businesses first. And there's lots of research and surveys to back this up. Two-thirds, 66% of consumers prefer to buy products and services from companies that have implemented programs that give back to society, and 46% are willing to pay extra for products and services from socially responsible companies. We're seeing that more and more. We're hearing it more and more, why people are making changes. The consumer demand is there. The consumers are asking questions. And this is the, this is the road we're going down, and we need to embrace it. You know, it just kind of needs to happen. And as staff in their administrative report noted, you know, there's a lot of issues around this for the environment and human health. Polystyrene is a toxic soup in production and then at the end of its life also, which is very brief, just like our plastic bags, very brief. So as we've all mostly heard, you know, they leach chemicals into our food. There's a ton of it that goes into our environment. And it doesn't biodegrade. It's like plastic. It just gets smaller and smaller particles. So, and people have really responded to the paper products. It's our intention to survey the community for the vendors who are already using paper and bring that back to you, to share with you that information. You know, they haven't lost their client base. They haven't imploded, nothing, you know. It's doable. Lots of people are already doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Leonard Cliffe.
Contrary to the belief of many Republicans, all progress, or most progress, happens with government intervention to start. I have as a prop, a cigarette. Forty years ago, I could probably have lit up in a council meeting. Certainly on airplanes, buses, all sorts of public transport, on elevators, people would smoke. And it wasn't because people just stopped at a goodness of their hearts or because they realized how stupid it was. It was because laws were passed prohibiting that conduct. And now the idea that anybody would even think about lighting a cigarette in an elevator is just bizarre. But it only happened because of legislation. Safety belts in cars. The auto companies fought that tooth-in-nail. It was going to be expensive. People were going to hate it. It was depriving them of their freedom to fly through windshields upon impact. And now it's like automatic that you get in your car and you do your seatbelt. But it was only because of legislation. My dad is 88 years old. When I take him on his monthly big shopping trip over to Star Market, he takes eight shopping bags that he's got around the house. And when one of them finally rips, he's got, you know, I don't know how many more from the days where they used to be free. And if he can figure that out, and if he can change, you know, 86 years of shopping habit, we all can. And it's the same thing with this. It makes sense. It's now feasible. There are alternatives. And to keep doing the same environmentally destructive things we've been doing in the past, simply because we're inertia stops change, it's up to council sometimes to, to shift the inertia in a positive way rather than the body not moving. Thank you.
Thank you, Leonard. Anybody else wishing to address us on this item? Yeah, Scott.
Good evening, council and staff. I'm Scott Eicher with the Ojai Valley Chamber of Commerce. I'm not a fan of styrofoam. I don't like the feel of it. I don't like eating from it. I don't like drinking from it. And I don't like that every styrofoam product is so incredibly fragile. And I particularly don't like that the broken pieces have become so ubiquitous. They're everywhere. They're in our riparian and shoreline habitats. We saw them washing up on the beaches in Costa Rica when we were living there. But I have some concerns about an ordinance. A proposed ban on styrofoam addresses only the use of styrofoam containers by those who sell prepared food. This ban makes no effort to curb retail sales of styrofoam or the use of it. Therefore, it's not really a ban. It's only a means to stop its use by a single business sector. If an ordinance is enacted, then restaurants, and does this term include bars, wine shops, and others that serve prepared foods? If it's enacted, and will restaurants and mini-marts serving coffee and such must find an alternative material? Yet, at the retail level, styrofoam coolers and cups could still be sold to the general public. For example, Joe's Quick Stop would not be able to use styrofoam to sell its hot coffee. However, they would be able to sell those styrofoam cups even though they couldn't use them. And if someone came in and bought six or seven cups of coffee and needed a way to carry them out, because he's exempt as a food preparer, he could put those recyclable cups into a single-use plastic bag. And the same thing would happen at restaurants. They're exempt from the single-bag ordinance. So when they have takeout food in a compostable container, they would slip that into a single-use plastic bag. And to me, that just seems kind of absurd. But it also seems as though it's discriminating just against the restaurants. How is it that you can still sell it, but some people can't use it? If the city wants to ban the use of styrofoam, then it should ban the sale of it at the same time. If the city wants prepared food purveyors to use a different material, and presumably something that would be compostable or at least recyclable, then they should supply a list of the suppliers with a simple analysis of the cost differentials. And how would the ban be enforced? We're a complaint-driven city, so without complaints, there would be no enforcement. In the event of enough complaints to warrant a part-time enforcement officer to visit offending businesses, what will the penalty be for not complying? While we may be able to count on voluntary compliance, and we already have that at places like Rainbow Bridge and Jim and Rob's, perhaps that's all we need, but it misses the point. Excuse me. During the discussion of the single-use plastic bag ordinance, a grocers' association representative stated that they were against all the local single-bag ordinances because that meant that each of their members would have to comply with the myriad of municipalities' ordinances that were not all the same. And instead, they urged their members to push the state to come up with a single set of standards for single-use plastic bags. I think that if the city pushed on the county to do that same thing countywide, not just within the county buildings, but countywide for food purveyors, then you would have a consistent set of standards that everyone could comply with. So again, I don't like styrofoam at all. That little squeaky sound it makes when the cooler's in the back of the truck, any of it. And seeing it everywhere all the time, and knowing fully well that it is so toxic, we have to do something about it. But I'm not really sure that a single ban on a single business sector is the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody else wishing to address us? Anybody else wishing to address us? Yes. Wendy, come forward.
Wendy Hilgers, Park Road. I guess I have a little different slant on things. I think this is one more social issue, and people can agree or disagree. But I think things like this should come from the bottom up, not from the top down. And I think maybe you might consider for someone who has an issue like this to get five hundred signatures of registered voters in the city of Ojai. To involve the community, to see what the community feels, not just to hear from a few people about their concerns. I think that might be really important. It would be a good way to teach, it would be a good way to expose your issues, and see what the community really does think. Or maybe a better way to go about it, just as Scott had that other suggestion, a more full program. One fact that I think is really interesting is the number-one piece of trash picked up along the highways in California, all throughout California, is disposable diapers. Is anyone leading the parade to get rid of disposable diapers? It's a huge concern, it's a terrible burden financially to the state, it's an environmental issue, and it's a health issue. But people want this, they aren't going to go back to washing old diapers. Anyway, I just think it's something to think about, and I think the community needs to have more input and not just pass these things through so fast. Because somebody has an agenda. Next week, it'll be something else. And maybe the city should get back to spending its time on city, real city issues. Thank you.
Thank you Wendy. Anybody else wishing to address us? Dale.
Thank you. Well Wendy and I have different opinion on this, but I agree with what Deborah said and what Lenny said, and also with what Scott said. I think the bans should be citywide on everything. We should not be selling styrofoam products or serving food in it at all. You know, this generation and the generation before us did so much damage to this planet, we owe it to the next generation to try to clean up our act. And I think that the city of Ojai is one of those cities that should lead the way in doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'll bring it back to council. I guess I should close the public hearing.
I've moved close to the public hearing.
Are we going to leave it open?
We'll leave it open.
All right. We'll continue the public hearing. I believe that Mayor Pro Tem Strobel had a couple of comments.
Thank you, and I'll start with my easiest one first. Simply for clarity, I'd like us to include beverage cups. We have cups, but I'd like it to include whatever we call them, beverage containers, glasses, whatever. Go ahead and put it in there, so someone doesn't have to say to us, does it include beverage containers? The other thing I'd like to say, I agree with, I forgot who I agreed with. Scott Iker. And, and that is, if we're going to ban styrofoam, let's ban styrofoam. I don't want to see coolers and ice chests, whatever they are. I don't want to see them exempted. If we're going to ban styrofoam, let's get serious with it. I also liked what Wendy said, and that is, what do our residents want? What do the majority of our residents want? Do they want to ban styrofoam for the health of the environment? Those are, those are all good questions. I don't know that it's something that we would put on the ballot in 2014, I don't know. But I think we should think about it. So we could be doing our own polls as councilmen, and I have been. As a matter of fact, I started mine off with, well, this isn't real high on my list of priorities. That was a mistake. A lot of people informed me that it was indeed high on their list of priorities. So, I did my homework, and other than those two things, and I came in and spoke with Mr. Clark and pointed out the things that I was concerned about. So I've, I've read this and I can support it. I'd like to see beverages, just for clarification, I'd like to see, if we're going to be serious about banning styrofoam, let's get serious.
Mayor Blatz?
Yes, Councilman Laura.
I definitely agree with Mayor Pro Tem Strobel about, if we're going to ban it, I think we should ban it across the board. I definitely agree. Creating exceptions, I'm just curious why this one was picked. And also do some outreach. I think outreach is crucial, I think that's how we get connected with our community. I think we should have input from everybody, from the vendors, store owners, whoever. But we cannot ignore the hazard or the negative effects it has on our ecosystem, on our environment. So that is, that is fact, we can't ignore it. But we do need to inform the public and do better outreach, I do agree on that. And, and, yeah, that's basically, I would, I would agree to go forward to.
So Mayor, there was one question that's come up twice now, and that's why not have a broader ban? And what I did with this is I took a conservative approach, because we didn't do a lot of research and spend a lot of staff time on it. And we looked at what has been adopted in other communities. And I didn't find any instance where a broader ban was adopted, other than to include utensils. But when I, when I, one of the questions I did ask the county of San Mateo, who kind of did the lead environmental work for quite a few cities in San Mateo County, is were they challenged, and, you know, were there any industry groups that came in? And they said there were industry groups that were monitoring this, and who threatened to challenge it when they got started, but didn't follow through on that threat. But I'm a little bit worried that if we break new ground and do something that nobody else has done, that we might get on the radar of the industry, and we might end up being the first one out of the gate, so to speak, on something new. And we just throw that out as something to consider, you know. Sometimes it's better to be the follower, and to let the larger cities take the risk, because they have the resources to defend themselves.
Councilwoman Clapp?
Well Councilwoman Smith and I requested this be put on an agenda, because she and I both agree that it's long overdue to do something about, about styrofoam being, being in the marketplace. And regarding outreach, we do need to do outreach. I'm not saying we shouldn't, but styrofoam was invented in the 1940s, and we've known for decades that it's bad for the environment. And so it's nothing new. I think what's important to recognize is that it's becoming such a environmental hazard because of the sheer volume of plastic styrofoam that's being put into our landfills. For example, there's 2.5 billion dollars of styrofoam cups put into landfills each year. Two, 2.5 billion. I mean, I can't, I can't even fathom, fathom what that is. So I called Nan Drake down at E.J. Harrison, because I know everyone gets the E.J. Harrison Trash Flash. And in the Trash Flash, it has pictures of the receptacles where we put stuff. And it, it says very clearly that no styrofoam. And so I called Nan about that, because in the recycled container, the only thing that wasn't allowed was styrofoam. So she wrote me just a real quick blurb about it. She wanted to come tonight, but she wasn't able to. She had a prior commitment with, with the Fillmore. But she said, I'm truly sorry that I kind of be there tonight to answer questions. But I've done some research, which I've included and will be more happy, more than happy to organize tours of the Gold Coast Recycling for those that have not been through it. It is a state-of-the-art facility in California, and we should all know that whatever comes gets to the, whatever gets to the facility in the correct container gets recycled. But, like many other recycling centers, Gold Coast does not accept styrofoam at the site for recycling. It is hard to handle, takes special equipment, and has low market value. Therefore, it is not really recyclable locally, no matter what the packaging says. So she also wanted to voice her support that Ojai passed an ordinance banning styrofoam within the city limits. I think we all know the health hazards, I think it's clear. I think it's long overdue, I think we should move forward with it. But I also think we should add eating utensils to that, because I did some research on costs. And the cost of a biodegradable cutlery is four cents per utensil, and plastic is four cents per utensil. So there's really no economic argument saying that would be an additional burden to anyone. So it seems to me that that could clearly be added, and it wouldn't be onerous for the business owner. I also did some research on a styrofoam and a biodegradable clamshell, the classic clamshell that you get for recycled, for taking your dishes home, or your leftovers home. I take my own container, but if you don't want to do that, you can get a biodegradable clamshell for twenty cents, and a styrofoam one costs seventeen cents. It's a three-cent difference. And the plastic cups, the cold cups, the ones you get at Blended Mogan, eleven cents for a biodegradable one, six cents for a plastic one, there's a five-cent difference. The largest difference in cost is the styrofoam coffee cup, opposed to the paper coffee cup. And that is pretty, there's a pretty dramatic difference there, it's five cents for styrofoam, and fourteen cents for biodegradable. But that, to me, is a small price to pay to protect the environment and do what we should be doing, and should have done a long time ago. So I'm in support of doing that, as well as adding the plastic utensils, requiring that they be biodegradable. And also, we haven't discussed foam peanuts, which we all see blowing down the street now and then. So I can hear what you're saying about not wanting to put up a red flag about adding some other stuff. I think sometimes you have to start with a small step. That may be what we have to do in order to not put up a red flag. Ideally, I would like to see styrofoam peanuts, styrofoam containers, and those other things we're talking about, not even be manufactured. But I think to start with the eating utensils would be great, and the takeout containers. And also, I think that the city would have to participate in that, and any city vendors, any city events, like Ojai Day, et cetera, would also be required not to have styrofoam containers offered by any of the vendors. And I would like to go forward with it. I think it's long overdue, and I think we owe it to our environment, and we owe it to animals that are eating the plastic and dying. So I would like to move to continue the public hearing to a date certain, November 12th, and to provide for further public input.
Is there a second? Oh, second? All right, I just have a comment. I agree with Councilwoman Clapp. I think we should look at it from the container standpoint, utensil standpoint, coffee cup standpoint. What was the fourth one you had?
Utensils.
Yeah, the...
Eating utensils.
Eating utensils. I think we ought to look at all of those. I don't think we can extend it to not being able to sell styrofoam cups in the grocery store, at least initially. We perhaps could, but I think that's going to, I, you know, everything has to start off in a workable place. And I think that we take this step first and then move forward. You know, Mr. Clapham brought up the idea of smoking. Well, smoking was an outlawed everywhere right off the vat, I believe it was in bars first, or restaurants first, they went to bars, and, you know. And there's, there has been talk of not allowing smoking in your car, or on the sidewalks, and things like that, but it hasn't gotten there yet, or in your private home. So I think that there is some, you have to have some rationality to it. But I think if we can start off with that, at the, at the, at the commercial areas, I think that that is a step in the right direction, and I'm all for it. So, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Slapp?
Yes. All right, moving on to item number three, which is a discussion item. Ventura County Transportation Department reciprocal agreement, pavement management systems project. Mr. Clark.
Thank you. Mr. Grant will be making this presentation.
Welcome, Mr. Grant.
Good evening, Mayor.
Thank you for being here.
Members of the council. Thank you, and hopefully, it's interesting, we're talking about maintenance of facilities, about a few things tonight. I think over the past ten years, twelve, fifteen years, even the city has been, has neglected the street maintenance quite a bit. And I think about two and a half years ago, just before I started, there was a presentation by Ron Calkins, he was the interim director. So part of what I was going to do is just remind everybody about the condition of the streets in the city. They haven't changed drastically, because, you know, like I was saying, the, from 2000 to 2010, we spent about $900,000 on street repairs, street overlays and rehabilitation. But $800,000 of that was state and federal grants, so really it was only $100,000 of the city's money. And at this time, because of the city's goals and priorities, supported by the city manager, we now have a capital improvement program, and we're really implementing the overlays on the streets to try to bring it up in condition. So I think we're on a good path, and I think this presentation will briefly go over where we're at, and where we can go with this recommendation that's on the agenda tonight, which is to develop a pavement management system. So overall, in the city, we have about forty-two miles of roads within, that are owned by the city, maintained by the city. It's, I threw a calculation down on the, the rough value of these streets, and if you calculate what it would cost to build those streets right now, it'd be approximately $100 million. So it's probably the biggest asset, I would think, as far as solid assets, so not human assets, within the city. And about seventeen percent of those are arterial or collector streets. Those are eligible for federal grants and federal and state funding. The residential streets generally aren't, although occasionally during special things like era funding, they are. There's a thing called the PCI, the Pavement Condition Index, and that rates the condition of the pavement. The scale goes from zero to 100, with zero being failed pavement in terrible condition, and 100 being a new road. They're the prime factor in the pavement management system, the PMS for short. And there are other factors that I'll go over as well. And then, this is just kind of a little more colorful graphic scale to see how bad it is at zero up to 100, and what the numbers mean. The PCI value will be used to identify and help out with the pavement management system, to identify which, where work is needed. It also tracks what work we do. We have a lot of streets out there, we do overlays, and it's important to keep a history of where it was repaired, and it affects, of course, what needs to be done to bring them up to par. And it projects their future condition with a modeling. So here's a street that's about 80 to 100, it's in really good condition. You don't see any kind of cracking, recent overlays, or construction of the road. You look at 80 to 70, you start seeing some maybe minor deterioration or ravelling on the surface after the sun has deteriorated the asphalt and so on, the asphalt that binds together, the aggregate. You drop down in the 70 to 50 zone, you start seeing block cracking, longitudinal cracking along the seams where the pavement was placed down.
Mr. Grant, if you could hold on, can we turn the lights down a little bit? The people in the audience are having a hard time seeing the screen. Is that better? There we go.
Okay. And then you can see, when you get down in the 25 to 50 zone, is when you see major alligatoring, and you'll see a lot of pothole development. And this is unfortunately a condition of a lot of the streets within the city. We've, you see them back and forth, and we've got a review of them. And then you get down to the 0 to 25, and you're in a failed condition, when you start having major, these potholes are difficult to repair, you can kind of keep working them, and our crews have several areas where they know they need to get out there and keep placing cold patch. It keeps disappearing, especially during the rainy season. And the curve there is pretty handy to look at, and it's, but it shows, just with time, of course, a street's going to come off the 100 high PCI level and drift down, but it develops a steep curve when it starts cracking. There's a lot of block cracking and alligator cracking, you start getting heavy deterioration, it moves down the curve quickly during that period. And then, the, so a couple and a half years ago, the county worked a little bit with Ron, and they did a very brief drive-by review of the streets to kind of get a rough idea of what our conditions are. And they found that this was the ratio, that the majority were in the fair to poor. But if you, if you sum up the good and very good, you've got 30%. So roughly a third good to very good, a third fair, a third poor, and a relatively small portion that actually failed at this point. But the average weighted pavement condition index, the PCI, is about 53 right now. So we're just, just breaking into the zone where it would be considered a fair pavement. And then a pie chart, I think, was developed for, people are so inclined. And then, let's see if my, I don't want to do that, yeah, okay. I meant to hit a laser, but, oh, I see a laser, okay. Yeah, and this is an interesting curve, because this is one of the major benefits of a pavement management system, is that you can take the cost when you... management system, is that you can take the cost when you have a relatively new road and it drifts down. And really, the, how fast it moves down that curve is depending, of course, how much traffic, what the weight of the traffic is, the heavy vehicles that bring it down the curve quickly. Some light residential streets don't get much traffic and they don't deteriorate. It's primarily the trash trucks that are tearing up those streets. And you can see, if you can catch this, when you can still do simple slurry overlays for 40 cents to a dollar a square foot, if you can catch that down in this area, you can bump yourself back up the curve. So, the idea is to keep moving back up the curve to avoid dropping into the next level, the light rehabilitation for the road overlay, which is gonna bring your price up from 40 cents to a dollar, so in the range of about 70 average. And it goes up over double the price when you've got to do the overlay. If you let it keep going, you get into road rehabilitation, which takes a lot of removal and replacements of the road. It gets very expensive. Now, you're into the price. It's hard to read that, but it's 15, I'm sorry, let's see, on five, five to eight dollars per square foot. So, about six and a half average. And then, total reconstruction gets very expensive. And so, there's, I think, a graphic view of just, one, you want to catch it and bump it back up the curve. You can do that for quite a while. And here's, so the managed approach is if you take a new roadway and you want to look at a 48-year cycle, which is just convenient based on how, how well most of these rehabilitations work, the three slurry seals at 40 cents per square foot, you can go with three slurry seals on a new road and get about 24 years down the road. So, you're spending about three times 40, about 20 a square foot over those 24 years. Finally, you're gonna have to go ahead and do the overlay to get eight more years out of it. And then, two, then after that, you can go through the same cycle and stick with it for an extremely long time. So, you're spending about $2.70 per square foot over 48 years. If you defer the maintenance and just let the road go, you're gonna have to about after 24 years for an average road, do a full remove and replacement for $16 to $24 per square foot. As you can see, there's a huge difference and there's a quick comparison of managed approach, spending $2.70 a square foot over 48 years, and then the failure approach, spending an average of $18 a square foot. So, that, the point here, I guess, being that pavement management is, is just like anything we think of, you know, our, our buildings or our cars or anything else, they're gonna deteriorate. And if you let the building go and let the stock go deteriorate and let the, you know, the frame and the foundation of the building start going, you're gonna have to replace the entire building. And it's very expensive versus managing and maintaining it properly. So, here's, a 10-year plan was considered with the pavement management system. You can plug in and program what would you do to try, a couple, how much money do you have to spend to try to bring the streets up to a better PCI average? And so, at that time, they modeled, they set a 10-year plan of spending one and a half to $2 million per year for 10 years. That would basically overlay all the streets in the city of Ojai. It would bring our average all the way up into the 70 range. Now, if you, the other approach was try to maintain what the conditions of the road right now are at 53 with the pavement condition index, and that would take about $500,000 per year. So, the good news is we're spending a touch more than that and hopefully we'll get some federal and state grants to try to boost that up like we did last year. And last year, we had the $400,000 grant, which will help that out. And we're, so this year, we're spending $700,000 to do the overlays on our roadways. So, we're a little bit ahead of that, but at least we'll be maintaining and moving slightly forward on the PCI index. So, as a final slide here, the benefits of the pavement management system. It is a standard tool used by most municipalities. The city actually had one, but they stopped updating it back in 2006. And what we need to do is go out and get the pavement condition index, which is detailed surveys of all the streets and get all the maintenance history back into the system and get it in, get the software updated. We've outdated the software as well. And, and then every three years, we'll need to go out and, we can either do a third of the streets every year in a couple of years, or I'll start doing all the streets every three years. And then, we can look at various scenarios and budgeting approaches. I think we've, I think at this time, the city manager has developed a budgeting approach as a portion of the bed tax. And we can strategize the best way to maintain the streets, not just do overlays, but try to stay up with, some streets, unfortunately, there'll be a lot of recommendations that will say if the street's already shot, it's, it's gonna have to get rebuilt anyways and those sometimes aren't acceptable. But we'll have to develop a strategy and we'll be back once we have the pavement manager program in place, assuming that you are supportive of the pavement management system. And then, and we can have that as part of our budgeting in the, in the spring. And that's the end of the.
Thank you, Greg. Can we have the lights? Thank you. All right. Any questions of Mr. Grant by the council? No? All right. Thank you. Comments by the council? Comments by Mr. Clark? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion. I just lost my spot here.
Carl, how unlike you.
I would move to authorize the city manager to execute a work agreement with the County of Ventura Transportation Department to provide technical support in creating and updating the pavement management system with a not-to-exceed amount of $12,000.
I second.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatts?
Yes. Yeah, and I want to compliment Mr. Clark again on being able to put together the, the infrastructure improvement and maintenance program in our budget. Thank you. Item number four, another discussion item, is the determination of the city council meeting dates for November and December 2013. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. As things stand right now, we do have council meetings scheduled during the week of Thanksgiving, the, the Tuesday preceding Thanksgiving and on Christmas Eve. And typically, we do cancel one or two meetings during the holiday season, so we are asking you if you would like to cancel those two.
Any comments?
Well, to me, it makes sense to cancel definitely December 24th.
Do you need a motion to do that?
Yes.
Yeah, we're adopting a resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think we would all agree that it would be a good idea to cancel the Christmas Eve one, but what about the Thanksgiving meeting, which would be the 26th?
All right. What's everybody's thought on that?
We do have a special meeting the preceding week, which is our joint meeting with the Board of Directors of the Libby Bull Foundation. So, there will be two meetings in, in November.
Okay.
Whether you cancel, if you cancel. If not, there'll be three.
Well, collectively, you know where I am. I think we should cancel December, the, the Christmas Eve, but I don't have, I'm not strong on the way, the other on Thanksgiving one.
I'm the same way. I'm not strong either way on the Thanksgiving.
How about January 7th?
January 7th?
Yeah.
What does that have?
What does that have to do with?
It's next year.
Nobody's got anything together by, right after New Year's anyway. We're all trying to get back in the swing of things.
I, I don't have any particular feelings one way or the other about November the 26th.
You mean the 24th?
26th.
26th.
Oh, I'm a December. I apologize. Yeah, okay.
I'm for, obviously, the 24th of December, but if, if it's the pleasure of the council, we'll meet on the 26th of November.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, unless there are any more comments. I'll make a motion to, we have a resolution here or something?
Yeah.
Yeah. To approve resolution number 13.
13 dash 45.
13 dash 45, canceling the meetings of November 26th and December 24th.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatts?
Yes. All right. So, those two meetings are canceled. We're now going to adjourn as the Ojai City Council, reconvene as the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency, and there's a consent calendar that needs to be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatts?
We have no other discussion items for the successor agency, so we're gonna adjourn the successor agency, reconvene as the Ojai City Council. Are there any council members that have any reports tonight? Councilman Laura?
No.
Councilwoman Clapp?
I have a, I have a question, if I could ask. Why isn't Maricopa Highway striped for bike riding? Is it because it's a state highway?
Good question.
It's so wide. It's by the school and the hospital and the, and Vons. And I just don't, I don't understand.
Yeah, I don't know either. It is a Caltrans highway, but we can, we can, we can follow up and ask that question and, and see if there's an answer to it.
It'd be nice to get something done in the bike world. I see more people on bikes all the time. That's all.
Okay. Mayor Proton Strobel?
I had sent Mr. Clark an email on this, but he may not have received it yet or responded before I turned my computer off. So, I'll bring it up here at council. The Ventura County Animal Services Commission have a couple of programs that they would like the cities to sign on to with them. These program, one of the programs is just a, a good PR-type thing where they, they give out instructions, it's called PAWS, and it's for animal services, things you can do. Another is asking the cities to, in effect, become, become involved in the enforcement management of the, some of the services that they do. My personal inclination is we would be happy to provide public service information, but I don't believe that we can put someone on our staff as part of the animal services. But I wanted to bring it up because that's my opinion, but it, is it something that needs to be presented to the council, placed on an agenda so that we have a council decision on this?
Mr. Clark?
Well, my, my recommendation is the same as Councilmember Strobel's, but if there's any council member who has a problem with that and feels we should discuss it more intensely, then it would make sense to put it on the agenda. Otherwise, I don't think it's really necessary.
Okay. Any, anyone wanting to put on the agenda? No? Okay. Anything else?
And I just wanted to mention that I did attend the, the first meeting of the Building Appeals Board with Mayor Blatts. And my attendance was more to just become more informed on the process and the, the scope of work they would be doing. And it was a very educational meeting, very informative. We have a really good group of people there.
I agree. When is their next meeting?
Tomorrow.
6 o'clock. And is there an agenda for that and is it posted?
There's an agenda which is posted and I think the chairman mentioned some of the items that are on that agenda.
Okay. Anything else? I just have a couple of things. One is, I just, and Mr. Grant, I think, is aware of this, but the Assembly Bill, finally, I believe, made it to the governor, governor's desk for his signature with regard to the new transportation district.
And he signed it?
He signed it. So, that should be good as far as Gold Coast and transportation, public transportation Ojai, we hope. One thing I just wanted to bring up is, we had received an email from Jeffrey Weinstein with regard to Montana Road. And I just wanted to know, do we, where does that fit in, into our road project as far as the rehabilitation? Do you know, Mr. Grant? I meant to ask you that earlier.
We did finish all the design work back in late spring and we submitted it to Caltrans. And, and we've been pushing Caltrans to release their funding. They released the funding through a special letter. We have to receive an authorization. So, we're pushing for that. They're saying that they're working on it and they're not committing to any dates. But it was supposed to be if we got it in back in June, we were gonna get an authorization within a couple of months. So, it's already been past that and, so we're pushing and I think, let's see, the Councilman Clapp recently found a contact that's been kind of helpful, actually. We've got a little bit more responses from some people, so we're pushing through that as well. But at this point, we're just.
Was Mr. Weinstein concerned about a specific road?
Yeah. He was, he is, he's concerned on Montana Road just off of Qiyama.
I think that's one that's not on the list for, for resurfacing this year, but we did go out and patch it if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, Montana's a bit unusual because the city only owns the first 200 to 300 feet and then it's all county after that.
Oh, I see.
The county condition is, it is better in the back, but the front side, I think it was a bit neglected. It's so far off, over towards Miners Oaks, that little 200-foot section. I think the potholes needed work and the crew went out and hit it immediately after that letter.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
While we have Mr. Grant there, do we have a cooperative agreement in effect now with the County of Ventura as far as repair, repaving any of our streets? Is there anything in effect now?
We have the agreement in place and the pavement management system you just authorized, we're utilizing that portion because they've got people who are pros that in their staff, so they're gonna help us on that. But as far as the overlays, last year, we used them, the overlays, and it was a little awkward, but I don't think we saved much of any money, but, and we lost control, so we couldn't move it as quickly as we hoped to. And this, and normally, we could move it much quicker. This year, unfortunately, with the Caltrans grant, we're, we're trying to lump together the residential and the Caltrans federal grant that we have to do for cost efficiency, do it all at one time. But in the future, I think we're better to do it our own, have better control over it.
Thank you. I also just wanted to add that Mr. Clark and Councilman Laura and myself attended the California League of Cities Convention in Sacramento a couple of weeks ago. And while I didn't think the presentation was all that great on one of the topics that Councilman Laura and I attended, I thought that the topic was very apropos. It had to do with community gardens and how you can have community gardens throughout your, throughout your city. Maybe a central location for a large one, but anywhere, there can technically be a garden. So, it was kind of interesting. Did you have any comments that you wanted to make with regard to the?
The conference?
Yeah, the conference.
I just thought it was very informative. The keynote speakers were great and I just, I got a lot of it from, in the standpoint of being my first conference there. It's, it's very helpful for me to know what the, sending, the Assembly are pushing and how it relates to local government, so that's it.
Mr. Clark?
I have nothing further.
Okay. Mr. Fletcher?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Sergeant? Thank you for being here.
My pleasure.
Appreciate it. Suzie?
I think so.
Mr. Grant, anything else?
Just something very brief, very brief. I understand it's not even 9 o'clock. It's terrific. And that is that I wanted to remind everybody it is Bike to School Week. So, we were, the Mob Shop promoted this and got it moving forward, the Kelly, Kelly Pasco over there. And the city's been supporting. We've worked together. We've got the, hopefully, everybody saw the signs out, the no parking signs. So, we've got a segment in the morning when everybody's, kids are going to school. We consider all the three different school times and the afternoon also. We consider it all the three different school times, and the afternoon also. And it's, it's very successful. You see a good 75 or so bikers up at the Topa Topa School. They have a corral for the bicycles, you know, a good, almost the size of this part of the room, a fenced area, which they normally have half full. It's completely full, and the outside's got bikes locked up all around the outside of it as well. So they, they were saying they've more than doubled the number of bikers going up to school. So it's great, we're, we're doing traffic counts on that, you know, bike, bike counts on Grand Avenue every 15 minutes, the total bikes, and that'll be good information for us when we're considering this Grand Avenue bike lane improvements.
All right. Thank you. Chief? Nothing? Thank you for being here. Rhonda?
I would just like to mention, moving forward with technology, we are now going to start taking the other commission meetings, Parks and Rec, Historical Commission, and Arts. James will be training high school students will be coming in, and so there'll be no cost to the city for this. It's part of our agreement with them for the PEG funding, but we're looking forward to it. And then after that, we'll be placing those meetings on our website, similar to what we do for Planning Commission and City Council, so people will have an opportunity to view those now as well.
Good. All right. We're now going to adjourn to a closed session. This closed session is a conference with real property negotiator pursuant to Section And this has to do with property located at 201 South Montgomery Street. The negotiating parties are the city negotiators, Rob Clark, our city manager. Property negotiators are the Ojai Art Center, and Scott, and Susan Smigle. It's under negotiations, price in terms of payment for purchase or lease of that property will be what we discuss. Are we expecting any kind of announcement afterwards? No? Okay. Then we're adjourned to closed session. Thank you, everyone.